Okay, we're ready to get started. Today's Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, and it is the City Council's regular meeting. I am calling this meeting to order and giving notice to the public and to the City Council that during this meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call? Mayor Daggett here. Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Spence. Councilmember House, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my pleasure.
And Vice Mayor, our mission statement.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Spence, would you read our land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by Native descendants, border mountains sacred to Indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, next up is open call to the public. This is where the public can talk to us about anything that is not on tonight's prepared agenda. Because whatever you're going to bring up is not on the agenda, we cannot answer any questions or ask you any questions. There's no back and forth. You have three minutes, and there is a timer right here. And first up, we have Stephen Brechner.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Steve Brechner. I'm an attorney, and I reside in Flagstaff approximately five months each year. I'm here today to speak to you in relation to two massive buildings in my residential neighborhood that are short-term rentals. I've spoken with some members of city staff, as well as the Vice Mayor, and they're aware of this particular short-term rental business operating in my neighborhood. I understand that between the two massive buildings, that contain 20 bedrooms and advertise to hold 65 guests overnight. The units are so large that they specifically target large group events and parties. In fact, they advertise the properties as permitting parties and events, including weddings with up to 80 guests between the two connected buildings. So far this spring, our neighborhood has endured a number of loud and large weddings at the venue, at least one of which included a DJ. In addition to the noise disturbance, these two massive structures cause a large amount of vehicles and congestion within our neighborhood. Our state statutes permit the city to create short-term rental ordinances to protect the public's health and safety, including rules and regulations related to transportation or traffic control. I ask that the city endeavor to amend its ordinances to address the safety and congestion issues caused by these massive rentals. In addition, aside from the city's ability to amend its ordinances, I would like to draw attention to the city having an undeveloped right-of-way next to these structures. It is my belief that if the city put in a road where it has the right-of-way, the transportation and traffic control issues in my neighborhood could largely be alleviated. I ask that the city look into putting a road there. I'm informed that several of my neighbors have complained to the city, taking photos, videos, have made various reports. I've spoken to other neighbors who are equally bothered by the extreme nuisance caused by the misuse of this property, but they have not yet formally complained because they don't know where to begin, and they don't want to draw attention to themselves. City staff have indicated they're working on the matter related to enforcement of existing ordinances. I'm asking that the city fully enforce the ordinances and regulations that are already in effect that should prevent this misuse of residential property in a solely residential neighborhood. In addition to enforcement of existing ordinances, since our state statutes specifically permit the city to adopt and enforce use and zoning ordinances, including ordinances related to noise, protection of welfare, and other nuisance issues related to short-term rentals, I ask that the city consider further amending its short-term rental ordinances in order to alleviate the congestion, excessive noise, and disturbances of the peace caused by these massive short-term rentals. To that end, I'm happy to offer the city my time and assistance related to any such efforts. I'm an experienced attorney, and I also serve as chairman of the Cave Creek Planning Commission. I'm familiar with these matters. I understand the process as well. I thank you all for your time and service. I'm happy to answer any questions, obviously. With what you indicated, that's it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Catherine Costa, Director of Nursing and Allied Health at Coconino Community College. I'm here today to share some exciting news about CCC's Education Partner of the Year. Each year, our college selects an Education Partner of the Year, and when it was nursing's turn to select this partner, we quickly knew we wanted to highlight our partner, which is Northern Arizona Healthcare, particularly Flagstaff Medical Center. We selected Flagstaff Medical Center as the CCC Education Partner of the Year because of our experiences working with them. All of our CCC students do their clinical training at FMC. While the students are working there, the FMC clinical managers and patient care technicians who support our students are amazing. They are always willing to flex our nursing student schedules so they can attend classes, and that's a lot to ask, and a lot to receive, from nonstop nursing operations such as FMC's Trauma Center. The effort goes a long way to ensuring our students feel FMC is a welcoming environment, and it makes our students feel that it is a workplace that cares about them and their continued education and clinical careers. Perhaps that's a big reason why so many of our students go on to work at FMC after graduation. In our recent class of 24 graduates, 16 of them accepted jobs at Northern Arizona Healthcare. I want to highlight NIH Education Department, which is responsible for employee education and training, and also offers many community training classes. The NIH Education Department also has an incredible nurse residency program that supports our CCC graduates through their first year on the job with additional training, mentorship, and relationship building that goes beyond orientation. This amazing program helps them settle into their first year with support and resources so they can be successful nurses throughout their career. It helps bridge the transition between education and employment. We know that the transition is tough, and once a nurse makes it through their first year on the job, they are much more likely to stay in nursing as a career. Actually, the attrition rate for nurses in their first year is 50%, which is pretty high. Without a robust support program that first year, many nurses leave the industry and pursue another field of work. I am pleased to support FMC with this recognition as CCC's Educational Partner of the Year for 2025. Thank you to Northern Arizona Healthcare for helping us train and employ nurses to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I am Tiffany Larrano, Chief Nursing Officer for Northern Arizona Healthcare. I'm pleased to be here with Catherine Costa today, and honored that we found out we were Coconino County's Selected Education Partner of the Year. This recognition is important to us because CCC is a critical partner in helping ensure there are enough nurses coming out of school to be able to adequately serve our community in the years to come. We've invested in making sure that those nurses who graduate stay in Flagstaff or Northern Arizona to serve our region. We feel the recognition is a testament to the work we do to help educate CCC nursing students in the clinical environment, a critical part of nursing education after students complete their classroom studies. We also think the award and the high number of CCC nursing students who go on to accept jobs with us helps illustrate that we are a great place to work. We've worked really hard to build a supportive, educational, and high-quality care environment for all of our colleagues. Those standards apply to students who are training, as well as colleagues who have worked with us for decades. Our efforts are bolstered by an amazing opportunity we have called the Nurse Residency Program. Through this program, we provide extra support to nurses in their first year after graduation. We're able to help them with additional training, feedback from peers and clinical educators, and also ensure we have the opportunity to debrief the work and explore emotions that can be pretty difficult in their first year. Catherine shared that statistically, nurses in their first year, we have about a 50% attrition rate. We're proud to say at Northern Arizona Healthcare, ours is below 9%. So this speaks to all of the work that we're doing to ensure that we're able to hold those nurses and keep them with us. This is type of support that has proven to retain the nurses after their first year on the job, a key measure to our workforce development strategies. The program is currently funded by state legislature, and our work is recognized nationwide as an example of how to onboard new graduates. We're pleased to be able to offer this to CCC graduates so they can find a supportive work environment that helps support them and the communities we serve. Because we have strong partnerships with educational institutions like Coconino Community College, we're able to expand that residency program next year to even more newly graduated nurses. Thank you to Coconino Community College for your partnership in ensuring we have the nurses that we need to care for our community every day. It is a true honor to be selected as their Education Partner of the Year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just in my microphone. Yat, eh, Mayor and Council. I can have for this time here. Those are my four clans from my mom, dad, and both grandpas from my maternal and paternal grandfathers. Today, I want to first give some good thoughts for Juneteenth coming up, and then also just want to make a couple of remarks regarding the future site of the Indigenous Community Cultural Center. We just want to take a little bit of time, Amy and myself, to let you know and update you on what has progressed a little bit this far. So, in 2016 through 2017, a visionary group of Indigenous community members came together to provide recommendations to City Council. The highest request of those recommendations came out, and that was a request for an Indigenous Community Cultural Center. While this was the biggest item, it was also one of the ones that was just highly, highly requested. And so since then, through public participation, we had gone through public participation. That was the community call to have community provide input for the future site of that And then we also went through our SOQ process, which is the request for Statement of Qualification, which took also almost a while. And Amy has all the timeframes for that. But today, we have exciting news that brings us to this day, where we, as the evaluation team for the procurement process, we designated a nonprofit to participate in this process with us. So that group is the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff, and we wanted to make sure that you all knew officially here in this space. And right now, next steps would be to develop an agreement that would speak to the type of relationship we will have with ICF and between the city and ICF. And I just want to also invite Amy to provide some words on that.
Sure, thank you, Rose. So we're incredibly excited to be at this point. Not 100% certain that an agreement will come forward to City Council, but maybe something done internally with staff. So we wanted to take this opportunity to update City Council on where we were in the process. Thank you.
You have three seconds left if you'd like to.
Thank you again.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I passed out some papers for you for a fundraiser we're doing on next Tuesday for a bingo event. Sorry, my printer's kind of run out of ink there, and the full thing didn't really fit on there. But we're doing it for a three-year-old boy who needs to have a kidney removed. He's local. So I also provided some information that his family wanted me to pass along. I just want to invite you all to maybe come by, check it out, maybe spread the word, and kind of see what Southside's all about with our fundraisers. Over the last year, we've raised $2,000 for a police sergeant, $5,000 for first responders, $2,000 for a local businesswoman who lost her husband, over $2,000 for a three-year-old girl that had brain cancer. So we do a lot of these fundraisers to raise some money for some good causes. We like to do them at least once or twice a month, every Tuesday. So if you have anything that you'd like to do to raise money for, feel free to reach out to me, and we'd be happy to do something like that. It's something that's very important to me. We're also partnering with the Humane Society in the future to raise some money for some pets that are, you know, don't have homes yet. And then we're also raising some money for a Southside Improvement Project that I try and do once a month, at least. We do it on the bingo nights. It's easy. We donate 30% of food sales, and we choose two beers and donate 50% of those sales as well. And we've raised about four grand that I'm eventually going to give to the DBA to hopefully help clean up the Southside neighborhood a little bit. So I just wanted to throw that out there. If anyone's interested in coming by and seeing what we do, it's a lot of fun. And if you have anything in the future that you want us to promote and raise money for as well, I'd be happy to do that as well. Thank you.
Next up, we have a proclamation for Juneteenth.
It's my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth National Independence Day, Jubilee Day, Freedom Day, and Emancipation Day, recognizes the anniversary of the events of June 19th, 1865, when Union Major General Gordon Granger led some 2,000 Union troops into Galveston Bay, Texas, to read the order announcing that the more than 250,000 enslaved Black persons in the state and other states in rebellion against the United States were free by executive decree. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest-known public celebration of the end of slavery in the United States, and celebrates and commemorates both the legacies of Black liberation, endurance, and joy, and the broader legacy of American freedom. And whereas Juneteenth marks both the end of most Black American enslavement and the start of an era of great hope, resiliency, uncertainty, and continued struggle for newly freed Black persons in America, with it comes the call to reflect, remember, and never repeat the historic, dehumanizing impacts of slavery, segregation, racial violence, voter disenfranchisement, or the other historic and persistent examples of injustice witnessed throughout African-American history. And whereas collectively, Juneteenth reminds us all of the invaluable and inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, as well as the precious promises of freedom, equity, and opportunity core to so much of what our nation holds dear. And whereas we take up and extend the call to action to celebrate and ensure true freedom for all, doing our part to collectively strive to close gaps of a measurable distance between us, affirm the promises of the Declaration of Independence that all people have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, reject acts of violence, and expand opportunities to understand and learn from our frank, yet compassionate, challenging, yet courageous conversations. Now therefore I, on behalf of Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim the date of June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth National Independence Day.[1272.33][1272.33][applause]
Thank you so much for this proclamation. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the city, first of all, for the wonderful Cleo Murdoch Park, where we held this year's Juneteenth event and activity. Just so everybody knows, next year, we will be moving the date back to its original date, June 19th. And I also want to thank Councilmember Garcia for attending the gala. It was a good time. Everybody had a great time, and they're looking forward to next year. Keep in mind that Southside Community Association has historically been the voice for African-American people in this community for probably close to 60 or 70 years, and we continue to be that voice, as well as the voice for other people who feel that they do not have a voice and who have been historically underrepresented. But we are also community partners, and that partnership was shown through the donations from the City of Flagstaff, Northern Arizona University, I'm forgetting something, Boys and Girls Club, Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated, and Phi Beta Sigma Incorporated. And so thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing this partnership with you. Thank you.[1396.82][1396.82][applause]
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kim Robinson. I'm the project coordinator for the Live Black Experience Project, and I thank the city and the county for making this proclamation, and just hope everyone remembers that Juneteenth is an American holiday. It's for everyone, and it celebrates the freedom of enslaved Black bodies that had to remain oppressed for 900 days from the Emancipation Proclamation, from January 1st, 1863, to June 19th, 1865. I want to thank the county for their partnership, and also give a shout-out to Flagstaff Pride for their partnership, who made it possible for us to have our Juneteenth celebration this Sunday at Heritage Square, June 22nd, 2025, from noon to 5:00 p.m. Thank you to the community for the support as well. Juneteenth is definitely a holiday for everyone involved, and please be that voice, be that bold voice, to let people know that it's not about racism, it's not about DEI, it's not about being woke, it's about freedom for everyone. Thank you.[1460.03][1460.03][applause]
Yes, so don't try to come here, because we will be closed. All right, council liaison reports. I'm going to start with Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the Jump Start Conference with the airport leadership, and we met with nine different airlines to talk about all the great reasons why they should fly out of Flagstaff and provide service. We secured two letters from some major airlines for our upcoming U.S. Department of Transportation Small Community Air Service Development Grant, which is a grant that's used when attracting an airline into a new market to ensure that they're not losing money. So it makes sure they're not, that there's a minimum income guarantee, is what I'm trying to say. Also, the airlines, we heard from CEOs of major airlines, as well as airplane developers and builders, and the overall consensus was airlines are projecting flat growth for the second half through 2026 due to softening demand, and many were postponing new aircraft deliveries because of ongoing tariffs. And the airline representatives that we met with all were nicely familiar with Flagstaff and Northern Arizona markets, and many of them expressed interest in coming to Flagstaff. This conference is like a first date, if you will, and so we follow up with information that they may have requested, and follow up meetings, and talk more thoroughly about needs and requirements and stuff. So it was a very productive conference. It was held in Indiana. And then Friday, I also attended partially the Indigenous Commission's Retreat, where we talked about our upcoming Co-Tuckers Day, as well as Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrations, and more on that to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to report on the Parks Commission, which met yesterday at the Aquaplex. We discussed during that meeting an RC track at the Sunnyside BMX Park Basin, which will be off to the side in an undeveloped portion of the park, and it seems like we have the electric racecar community all on board and ready to kind of take the helm and lead in this direction. And it seems like the commission was also on board with exploring this idea for the RC community, and I think it'll be quite the boon for the neighborhood as well, since there is plenty of activity with the BMX park there. This will give us even more activity for the Sunnyside neighborhoods. We appreciate that. We also discussed our new park ranger, and welcomed Thomas McKenna. Also, Helled Jensen Recreation Center, HVAC Design and Installation Update. We will be working towards getting some much-needed, fresh, cool air for those kids that, if anybody's been in that area before, it's quite the swelter. So we also talked about an update on sports courts for Bushmaster parks. It looks like leveling has begun, some grading has taken place, and those are well on their way to being produced and done in quite an expedient factor. Shout-out to Parks, or pros in general. Also, we discussed that this in July is Parks and Recreation Month, so get ready for lots of talk around parks and recreation, and how you can get involved with the activities for that month. I also wanted to mention that anyone who is interested in being part of the Parks and Recreation Commission, there are some seats available. If you apply online, that's one of, I believe, 24 or 28 commissions. Don't hold me on those numbers, 26. We'll split it right in the middle. commissions, don't hold me on those numbers, twenty-six, we'll split it right in the middle. And, and it's, it's a great place to start as a community member at the commission level. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Tomorrow, there is a Mountain Line Board Meeting, ten to noon, and I believe it's all virtual this time around. Friday, I will be speaking to the State Transportation Board on behalf of Metroplan, and I'm going to be talking about the city's Arizona Smart Application for Match for the Butler Fourth Raise Grant Award. I'm excited to do that.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I was in attendance at the National Apartment Association Apartmentalize Conference, I just completely blanked on the name of it. It is their largest educational conference of the year, and so, a lot of great conversations about housing throughout the, the nation, and the needs of communities like ours, when it comes to expanding options for affordable housing, missing middle, and so forth, so a lot of good information there. Yesterday, myself, Councilmember Matthews, Councilmember Garcia, and Councilmember Spence had the opportunity to meet with some youths from the Boys and Girls Club of Flagstaff. They had the opportunity to come in, actually sit in our seats, in the seats of city leadership, ask us a lot of questions, tell us what was important to them, and I can tell you that they are asking some very big, very important questions, and have a lot of really big topics on their minds. One of the major topics that they wanted to talk about towards the, kind of, the end of our time together was homelessness in Flagstaff, and so, really powerful to have the opportunity to speak with them about their perceptions of that community concern, and, and what they hope for the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence.
About a week ago, I had the opportunity to join our wildland firefighters in touring, touring the basin fire, which was on the west side of Highway one eighty, about twenty-five miles north of, of Flagstaff. And the reason this fire is significant in the history of fire in our area is that the combination of our local wildland firefighters, and the Forest Service, and recreational agencies, all got together and agreed that this fire, which was lightning caused, should be allowed to burn in a controlled, managed matter. And they got clearance from the National Forest Service Fire Agency, and they successfully burned nine thousand acres, which were scheduled for future controlled burns, they were able to do that in two days. So, it, it was very instructive tour, and my understanding of wildland fire management increased greatly, so thank you to that group.
I've got a couple of quick updates on my two commissions. The first is the Housing Authority. We had a meeting today and got a little update on the Rental Assistance Demonstration, which is just a weird name for this thing, but essentially what it is, it's a program through the Housing and Urban Development Agency, federal agency, to preserve and improve public housing, and staff has received responses to an RFP that they put out, they're going to be bringing information to us, which will be much more detailed than what I just shared, but that, that program is moving forward. We also talked about the housing vouchers, the City of Flagstaff is going to take on the management of housing vouchers that the City of Winslow has, because they don't have the capacity to manage those anymore, so that's going to be an additional fifty-some housing vouchers that can also be used in Flagstaff. And the next Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living meeting will be on June twenty-fifth, plus they're adding a, an additional planning session to that, so that's going to be half a day with this commission, which is probably one of the hardest-working commissions that I've served on, and they're a pleasure to work with. So, that's what I have, and we will move on to the Consent Agenda. All matters under the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine, unless a member of the City Council expresses a desire at the meeting to remove an item from the Council Consent Agenda for discussion, the Consent Agenda will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda. Unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by the Council are budgeted items. So, Council, are there any items on the Consent Agenda that you would like to pull for separate discussion? Councilmember Spence.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to pull D of the four-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar equipment barn design from the Consent Agenda.
Are there any other items, Council? So, let's go ahead and vote on the Consent Agenda, all items except for D, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items seven A, B, C, and E for approval.
I'll second. And F.
And F.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moving back to D, looks like we have staff coming down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Overton, Public Works Director, and Item D is the Approval for Design Agreement with our contractor, D L R, and Councilmember Spence, you had a question or concern?
I do support this contract with the understanding that time is of the essence to have this design contract go through the cooperative contract process. I understand saves time on getting the job done, but it does bypass the competitive bidding for such a contract, and my reason for asking for this discussion is to appreciate the, the need that Public Works has to get this barn constructed on a timely manner before snow flies, but my purpose in bringing it up for discussion is to be sure that the actual construction of the barn be put up to a competitive bid process. Is that what is envisioned by Public Works and the procurement division of the city?
Thank you for the questions and the comments, Councilmember. I'll address those, hopefully, in order. So, one, we did select a cooperative design process. It is a competitive process for firms to apply to the agencies that solicit that work. We are actually utilizing that cooperative contract. We find it to be good value, and it does save time within our procurement process, so that is a tool that's available to us, I feel, and I'll let procurement speak to it if needed, but it is a competitive process. We have selected this firm, they're a outstanding firm that has done other work for us, we find that this will be suitable for them to design this equipment facility, this will complete our final building for the Streets Group and our Future Transportation Operations Center. So, this effort really does need to occur, they will also provide us with not only those construction documents that we are required to submit for all of our permitting requirements, but they will also submit with us our engineers' cost estimates, so we would then take this packet that you're speaking to, and we would then competitively put that through a solicitation. We have not gotten to that point within the process. I would anticipate this design taking six to eight months. We would then complete that process, and then move into that next phase of procurement, which is the vertical construction and delivery of this project. Hopefully, that answers your questions.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions, Council? Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
So, I will entertain a motion to approve item number D, or letter D.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving down, oh, and before, no, staff, I didn't mean that for, for you, I accidentally said Winslow instead of Williams, so to Mayor Kano, I'm, I'm sorry that I said that the, that the city that was turning them over was Winslow, it's Williams. All right, we're on to public hearing items. A is fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget and property tax levy. I'm opening the public hearing, and we will have a presentation from staff, and then take council questions.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, Heidi Derryberry, the city's Budget Director. My presentation this evening will cover Agenda Items eight A, nine A, and ten A, related to the adoption of the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget and property taxes. I'd like to start just talking briefly about our timeline. We were here two weeks ago, on June third, for the adoption of the tentative budget. We are here this evening to begin with the public hearing for the budget and tax levy. We will also have the final budget adoption via resolution, and the first read of the property tax ordinance to set the property tax rate. Then, on July first, we will be back to have the second read and adoption of the property tax ordinance. The City of Flagstaff Total Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Budget is approximately five-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-seven-million dollars. This is a fifty-six-point-seven-million-dollar, or ten percent decrease over the previous year. Much of this decrease is related to capital projects, primarily in the transportation funds, the geo-bond-funded capital project funds, and water funds. This reduction is the result of the expected completion of several large projects, including the Beulah University realignment project, the Spruce Wash suite of projects, as well as the shifting of a number of projects to better align with resources and construction timelines. The city budget is broken down into five fund types, including the General Fund, Special Revenue Funds, Debt Service Funds, Capital Project Funds, and Enterprise Funds. The General Fund is approximately one-hundred-and-seventeen-million dollars, or twenty-three percent of this overall budget. The Special Revenue Funds make up approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-three-million, or twenty-nine percent of the total budget. This includes Highway User Revenue Fund, Transportation Tax Funds, Bedboard and Beverage Tax Funds, Park Flag, and the Water Infrastructure Protection Fund. Debt Service Funds make up twenty-one-point-five-million, or four percent of the total budget. This includes the General Obligation Bond Debt Service, as well as the Pension Bond Debt Service. Capital Project Funds make up sixty-one-point-eight-million, or twelve percent of the total budget, and include items such as Proposition four forty-one and four forty-two. And finally, Enterprise Funds make up one-hundred-and-sixty-nine-point-three-million, or thirty-two percent of the budget. This includes drinking water, wastewater, reclaimed water, storm water, solid waste, sustainability and environmental, airport and F H A. Included with the city budget is the proposed primary and secondary property taxes. Based on Council's direction, the proposed primary tax levy this fiscal year will be a flat levy. The total proposed city primary property tax levy is approximately seven-point-three-million dollars. This levy includes new construction revenue of approximately thirty-six-thousand dollars. Assessed values increased an average of five-point-two-six percent on existing property excluding new construction. Based on this flat levy, the property tax rate will be point-six-zero-four-five per one-hundred dollars of assessed value, which is a rate decrease over the prior year of This levy is nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fourteen dollars below the maximum allowable levy set by state statute. Primary property taxes are unrestricted and are included in the General Fund. The total proposed secondary property tax levy is based on a flat rate of point-eight-zero-zero-zero for what, per one-hundred dollars assessed value, and is an approximately nine-point-six-million dollars. This is a five percent, five-point-seven percent increase over the prior year. Per state statute, the levy cannot exceed the estimated general obligation debt service payments for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. The slide before you now provides a five-year history of the city's primary and secondary property tax rates. As you can see in this chart, the rates have continued to decrease year over year. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, the maximum allowable rate is point-six-eight-zero-eight per one-hundred dollars assessed value, and the proposed flat levy rate is point-six-zero-four-five. The city's property assessed values continue to increase year over year. The city's limited net assessed value increased five-point-eight percent, which included new construction of five-point-six-million dollars, and the full cash value increased two-point-three percent. The County Assessors Office is who determines these values. The values before you are based on valuations completed in late twenty twenty-three for tax year twenty twenty-five. Per state statute, limited assessed value is used to calculate primary and secondary property tax, and limited assessed value is limited to a five percent increase per year for most real property. The next two slides will show how the city's proposed property tax rates impact our community property taxpayers. In the example before you, for residential taxpayers, a property with an assessed value of a hundred-thousand dollars, and assuming no increase to the assessed valuation from the prior year, will see an overall decrease of three dollars and eighteen cents. Also to note, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five city property taxes were approximately twenty percent of the total residential property tax bill. The following example is for a commercial property owner. A commercial property taxpayer with an assessed value of approximately a million dollars, and again, assuming no increase to the assessed valuation from the prior year, will see an overall decrease of fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. That does conclude the presentation I have, if you have any questions.
Council, any questions? I do not see any public comment. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I am looking for a motion to, nope, I'm not.
We need to convene a special meeting.
I'm sorry?
Mayor, we need to convene the special meeting for the motion to take place and the vote to take place in there.
Yes, 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 we do. Sterling.
Thank you.
All right, so do I, I don't adjourn this meeting, I just open up a new meeting, it's like having tabs all open in your browser.
That's a great comparison, Mayor.
All right, so, I am opening the special meeting, and we are considering, and possibly a consideration and adoption of Resolution number two zero two-five-dash-three-five, so if there are no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to read Resolution number twenty twenty-five-dash-three-five by title only.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, City Clerk?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, adopting the
A resolution of the Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, adopting the budget for the City of Flagstaff for fiscal year 2025-26.
And a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-35.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, I'm reconvening the regular meeting. And for the public's information, we've been working on the budget for about a year, so this wasn't... That's why there weren't questions and whatnot. Okay, so now we're moving down to the regular agenda, consideration and adoption of ordinance Number 2025-13.
Mayor? I'd like to move to read ordinance Number 2025-23 by title only for the first time.
13.
Vote 2025-13 by title only for the first time.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? City clerk?
An ordinance levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100, a valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing funds for general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. And on July 1st, we will come back and adopt the ordinance. Moving down to B, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-37, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council. Why do I do this? I started reading it and now approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Flagstaff Unified School District and the City of Flagstaff to provide community-wide out-of-school-time programs.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel, Rebecca Sayers, Parks Rec Open Space and Events Director. I don't have a presentation for you today, but this IGA is continuing the longstanding partnership that the city has had with FUSD to provide out-of-school-time programs, both before and after school. And the amounts and such are in the IGA, subject to council budget approval and appropriation every year. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a comment. Being it my first time reading over this agreement, I was really impressed by the effect and magnitude that taxpayer funding has on our youth programs and the effectiveness that your department has on carrying those organized activities out for the betterment of our community. Thank you so much for what you do. Yeah, I'm often surprised pleasantly by the things that I read on counsel, and this is one of the ones that really warmed my heart.
Any additional questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to read Resolution or I'd like to make a motion to read Resolution Number 2025-37 by title only.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, city clerk?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, adopting... Excuse me, that is the wrong resolution. Bear with me, I'm sorry.
Stacy, you heard the flub that I had five minutes ago, right? So please do not...
Would you like me to correct her?
Yes, would you please?
Stacy, that was the wrong resolution.
My apologies. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Flagstaff Unified School District and the City of Flagstaff for community-wide out-of-school-time programs.
And a motion to adopt?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-37.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving down to C, consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2025-32 and ordinance 2025-12.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Tiffany Yantle, Zoning Code Manager. Tonight, I'm here to present a zoning code text amendment in terms of a forest resource pilot program. The proposed amendment modifies the purpose and goals of the resource protection standards to include prioritizing wildfire resilience to ensure neighborhoods, sites, and buildings are designed to be better prepared for the increasing risks of urban fire initiated by wildfires. The amendment also creates a three-year limited-term pilot program to address forest resource preservation requirements for both developed and undeveloped properties within the resource protection overlay. Implementation of the pilot program will be a joint effort between the Flagstaff Fire Department and the Community Development Division to integrate new technology as well as the principles of the Forest Management Plan. Just really quickly, just to show you the types of changes in terms of our purpose statement, we have added language to prioritize fire as well as preserving natural resources. We have added two goals to the principles of the resource protection of our standards, including manage healthy and sustainable forests, reduce the risk of wildfire initiating urban fires, and prioritizing wildfire resilience to ensure neighborhood sites and buildings are designed to be better prepared. The Forest Resource Program will require an agreement be signed between any applicant and the planning director that the city will commit to providing certain data as much as we have available to the applicant, and the applicant has certain responsibilities as called out for in the draft amendment. The minimum requirements include a digital tree inventory. The plan will preserve, to the greatest extent feasible, high-value resources as determined by staff, and forest resource preservation will align with the desired conditions of the Forest Management Plan. The program does not permit deforestation of a development site, and the termination of the Forest Resource Protection Pilot Program is possible if the applicant does not... Oh, so the termination of the Forest Resource Pilot Program after the execution, so this is only for a three-year timeframe, so we've built-in provisions for developments that are going to extend beyond that three years as part of that agreement. So the findings for a zoning code text amendment, the first is that the proposed amendment needs to be consistent with and conform with the policies of the general plan. You can see here that there are several goals and policies that reference the resource protection or reference resource protection in general. The first one I thought was very interesting, where it talks about integrating available science into policies governing the use and conservation of Flagstaff's natural resources. That's exactly what we're trying to do, is we are trying to update our forest resource protection standards and integrate new technology. Additionally, the tenure housing plan has policies about evaluating and amending the resource protection overlay to ensure that minimum densities can be met. That is also a provision of this code, is to try to ensure that we're meeting minimum densities as well as managing forest resources. The Carbon Neutrality Plan also talks about protecting existing forests and supporting planning and zoning efforts that protect natural resources. The proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest. The proposed amendment is intended to enhance public health and safety by allowing a pilot program for the preservation of required forest resources within a development for the purposes of advancing wildfire resiliency. And the proposed amendment is internally consistent. It is. It utilizes the existing format and does not conflict with other zoning code provisions. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously to approve this particular amendment. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Councilmember Matthews, then Councilmember House?
Tiffany, I was really excited to learn about this when the hearings were going on in DC about Fix Our Forest and learning about fire-resistant buildings and stuff. Is... I wasn't sure on the presentation, is this just about the resource protection pilot program? Does that include building standards? And if it does, how does that affect the cost of housing?
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. This is only in regard to the forest resource standards for preservation.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. Like Councilmember Matthews, very happy to see this coming forward, particularly in how it not only focuses on creating continued resiliency for our community when it comes to our risk of wildfire, but also really appreciate the slide in your presentation that shows the interconnectedness of the different plans that we have to keep in mind when coming up with proposals like this. I think it's really important for our community to see that interconnectedness and for us to recognize it as well from our seats that all of these things are playing together in really important ways. And so just very appreciative to your team in drafting these amendments, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review of it, and looking forward to moving this forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tiffany, for the presentation. When we first started talking about this new idea, I was a little apprehensive, of course, because we were tinkering with the resource protection overlay. And I always thought that that was really significant for our community to have. But as I've spent more time on counsel, as I've spent more time understanding what this is all about, I actually feel like this is going to protect the useful resources in a more robust way while eliminating some of those dangers of the redundancy in some resources that weren't quite farmed correctly because of, for whatever reason. So I think that this isn't a threat to the resource protection overlay necessarily, but in addition, and a positive impact for our community after further review. So thank you for helping me get to that understanding by following along with the great ideas that staff has brought up.
Thank you so much for spending the time with us.
Vice Mayor?
And just real quick to kind of echo that, I do appreciate the partnership you've had with FIRE and taking us out on the RPO tour so that we can see it firsthand, and I'm very excited for this program. I've been telling you personally that I'm just so thankful that you are proactive and taking a hold of this and really making a difference, so thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, I will entertain a motion if you are so ready.
Mayor, I move to read Resolution Number 2025-32 by title only for the first time.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? City clerk?
I have the right one this time. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled PZ-25-00088-Forest Service Pilot Program, Forest Resource Pilot Program.
Thank you. And another motion?
Mayor, I'll move to read ordinance Number 2025-12 by title only for the first time.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10 Flagstaff Zoning Code by adopting by reference that certain document entitled PZ-25-00088-Forest Resource Pilot Program, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. All right, D, consideration and adoption of concept design. And here we have Economic Vitality and PROS.
Can you do that again?
Yes, would you like me to go all the way back up to do it again or just?
Please do, please do.
We are... We're very excited to be here to speak a little bit about the Downtown Connection Center's civic space concept. Mountain Line was planning to attend, but you guys are on a roll and they are not here yet. But we're fine moving forward, so we appreciate the opportunity.
Are you sure? We can rearrange the agenda?
I think we're good now.
I think we'll... We can probably proceed. We texted them and let them know, and so hopefully they're on their way. However you'd like to handle it, Mayor.
All right. Let's go.
Well, so as you and the public are aware, there is a wonderful new building that has been built as a part of the Downtown Connection Center and opened just recently to offices. As a part of that project, you'll also be aware... I don't know where you're going. No, just kidding. That the civic space is planned to go, and here's an aerial view to help show where it's going to be. You can see that it is on the eastern edge of the parcel, sort of between Beaver Street and the parking adjacent to Beaver Street, and where the bus bays themselves are going to be. Mountain Line is moving forward with up to 30% design on their concepts and has asked PROS and Economic Vitality to assist with some public meetings, to receive feedback on these particular items. Amy Hagan and myself have attended and presented at the BPAC, the Beautification Public Arts Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Downtown Business Alliance to talk about some of the features that you're going to see and to receive some of that feedback, because many of the public meetings, I will say, there was a significant amount of conversation around the IGA that created this space and around the ideas of the civic space a few years ago. But as they are planning to move forward with design, we believed it was time for them to come forward again and to have us help to demonstrate these particular items and get that feedback so they can move from that 30% design forward. So... Again, with some of the orientation, you can see where the new building is on the west side, where the bus bays will go. Currently, there is parking there that's managed by Park Flag, but is actually owned by Mountain Line, and we appreciate their partnership on that. And then you can see where the civic space is going to be. There was a significant amount of conversation around how much civic space and how much parking would be put in place, and that was identified within the intergovernmental agreement with Mountain Line. And so really, what we've been talking about with the public and what we're bringing forward today is a conversation about what happens within the civic space that's already defined by that intergovernmental agreement, and less a focus of how the parcel should be split out, because that was codified in the IGA some time ago. But we are very excited about seeing where their 30% plans have taken us. So again, site location, opportunities and constraints. You can see the Rio de Flag easement rolling right through the civic space and into the park space. This is part of the reason that it hasn't been built even as a part of this particular project. Obviously, this particular civic space is going to be constructed after the Rio de Flag is completed, and they will be constructing it, Mountain Line will be constructing it, and then PROS will maintain from then on. In fact, do you want to take over from here?
I'll pop in, sure, thank you, Dave.
All right.
So we have some unique kind of bubble diagrams that are going to come up here next, but want to touch on a few of the themes that came out from that extensive public outreach that Mountain Line performed over a few years. Natural, that was a big word from the feedback from our community. Fluid, kinetic, makes sense, right? Modern, uplifting, and celebratory. All interesting, interesting words to describe. How then did we get to this with Mountain Line, Ardua, and Norris Design, plus City of Flagstaff? So as Dave articulated earlier, we've got the blue future Rio de Flag easement that goes through there, and there's a civic space that is similar in size to our civic space at Heritage Square along Aspen Avenue. And then there's also a park space where we can get some of those natural and planting features that were... Some of those key words that were hit on with our community. So this gives an overall view of both those spaces, and we can certainly flip back to this, because we've got some slides that dial in each one of these. this because we've got some slides that dial in each one of these particular amazing spots. Trees. We've talked quite a bit at a staff level and with administration regarding trees, street trees, urban trees, and, and any of those nuances that come with that. So our, our idea for this space are trees and planters, something a little different than the street tree that's in ground that then causes some, some heartache over time with, whether if it's with heaving concrete curbs, asphalt, you name it. So, and then there's an example of what this could resemble there on the bottom right. We've got a, an unique opportunity to do trees and planters at this space. The urban trail, there's an urban trail connection piece to this. So that connectivity to occur, that's demonstrated there in the orange with a route that then would take individuals to the south side of Phoenix Avenue. There's a public art opportunity. So at the Downtown Connection Center, that if I'm not mistaken, opened last Monday, I believe, as an official opening, if my weeks are correct, there is a piece of art that is installed there. That is the, the South Side Grove, and that will be relocated to this location when it comes time to develop this piece. So it will be that exact piece that is today out in front of the Downtown Connection Center. Again, it gets relocated to this location. Splash pad. I know you, don't laugh, splash pad. You know, honestly, when we're talking about climate impacts in the future, this creates a free cooling space for our community and our visitors. Amazing. We don't have one in, in our Parks and Recreation Open Space and Events Complete Repertoire. So, an inclusive splash, splash pad. I think it could provide a really unique space when you're talking about in a civic space like this.
If I could just add, we have done this presentation a few times, and people seem to be really enthusiastic about the splash pad. There are questions, of course, about management and about maintenance and about water. I believe those are questions that can get answered as a part of this, but there has been a high degree of enthusiasm about the potential splash pad and its ability to be a space that people can cool because, as we know, many Flagstaff homes don't have air conditioning. And that could be, really be a space that different age groups can mingle together and have a great time. Sorry, I hope you don't mind.
I mean, I can see the zinc on our noses, and we'll be out there, right? Definitely. Okay.
We have two either questions or comments. Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Matthews.
Sure.
And I just wanted to comment quickly why I was laughing, because when you first brought up splash pad to me, I was not sold. But I have seen the presentation, I have heard loud and clear from the community that this is a good community asset, and it provides more than just splashing around in water. It is a cooling opportunity, and thank you for thinking outside the box, Amy. I think it's great.
Thank you. Mine is more of a question, you know, up here in Flagstaff, people that aren't around in the wintertime have to turn off their water and, you know, blow out their pipes and stuff. So, is there, the, the people that install these, like, are they familiar and understand the precautions we have to take to make sure in the wintertime those pipes that push up the water don't freeze over in the wintertime? Excellent question, Councilmember Matthews, and yes, they are. And it, it's in really small font, but the idea behind this is to use a recirculating system to also meet water conservation. And how, I'm going to flip to the next slide because then we show a public restroom with a mechanical piece to it to help house that recirculating pump system for the splash pad. Will there be a time that maybe the splash pad needs to be turned off? Quite possibly. But as we continue to see temperatures possibly rise, maybe not as much time as what we used to see 15, 20 years ago. So I think as we dive further into the actual design elements of both these amenities, we'll get that dialed in and figured out. By all means, will PROS staff need to be trained on this? We will, absolutely. But we're up for that challenge. And is there a risk when we have monsoons and lightning for people to be splashing around in the water? Great question, and I do not have the best solid answer for. We're currently trying to explore some of that, including with our risk management team here at the city, on what are the legalities regarding lightning in water activities or aquatic activities, whether if they're outside or inside. So more to come on that because we are trying to explore what really is the rule policy or best practice to follow on that. Monsoons with floods certainly could occur, but I think in amenity, I'll cruise back to the splash pad, but I think in amenity like the splash pad is going to allow floodwaters to come across, there'll probably be some debris cleanup, and then we're back in operation. Well, outside of just mitigating and ensuring those risk factors are mitigated, I think it's a great idea. So, thank you. Thank you, absolutely. Excellent questions, especially when it's an amenity we don't have currently in our system, but we'll become the experts on it.
One moment. Councilmember Garcia.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Matthews kind of brought up the point, and then you, you spoke to it already. Recently, when I was in Omaha, Nebraska, visiting my son, we were downtown and we stumbled upon this splash pad. Knowing this was in the pipeline, of course, I interviewed as many people as would talk to me while my shoes were kicked off and my pants were rolled up to my knees, splashing around in the water myself. What I found out that there was quite a diverse amalgamation of, of community members from all demographics that were, that took that opportunity, some of which said, "We can't afford to go to some of the other places around here, so we're coming here. It's just an amazing time, as well as tourists, and as well as downtown folks and, and the like." It was a good mix. So I think it's appropriate from, from at least that one little, small example. But I was going to bring up the point of they use the regenerative system, and you already said that we're going to do that here. So just hammering that point home as far as water conservation is concerned. And then, I think we'll get more, in more into details in, in the future, and we don't need to get in the weeds of this, but, you know, my assumption of how water works is it'll go back into our system and potentially be reused as reclaimed water anyways. Do you know, do you, do you know if that's the case?
Would be the case here. I would imagine that this will be potable water, so not reclaimed. And if it's recirculating, I'm, you know, again, reuse, but I'm not sure if there'll be a need for any of that to be waste and then go into our water services stream with that. So not 100% sure how this is going to work exactly, but with that tie-in and a mechanical building associated with a restroom, which is going to have both potable hand washing water and flushable mechanisms. So we'll see how all of that works because we don't need those items being recirculated.
Thank you so much for that clarification, and I just kind of wanted to drive the point home as talking to the community members in my constituency here in Flagstaff, that is the only negative that has come up, and it's nice to hear publicly that we could reassure that we're getting that taken care of and that we're not going to be wasting water. We're going to be utilizing it for recreation.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we're showing a, a single, all-gendered, single restroom in this location. There are public-facing restrooms at our new Downtown Connection Center, but we figured one single unit at this location would be ideal. Again, public restroom there handled how many of our public restrooms are in our parkgrounds Then with that word celebratory, that theme that came out from the public outreach, an idea was, is there some way to celebrate our mountain view that's in this location, especially when you look toward the north, toward our sacred peak? So there's an example here that is in Cape Town of a framed photo, take your photo kind of thing. So more ideas, I think, to come from this and what this can resemble, but I do believe this was discussed definitely with our BPAC Commission and elsewhere on, what could we do here to really celebrate that view or create some kind of neat memory capture space? So we have that identified here. Then, then when we move away from the actual civic space part, then there's more of the naturalized park, which is in the floodway. So this is something ideal to do in a space like that when we have a floodway. So let me click through a couple of these, oop, there aren't a couple of those slides. You know what? It's going to be a naturally landscaped space, green space, if you will, I think with a handful of those trees and planters and, and some other amenities that are very natural park-like in this location. We have proposed a, a food truck area or a concrete kind of concourse where that could, that type of activity could occur with a special event permit, similar to how we can issue special event permits with Heritage Square. This is on that civic space side, so that yellow side there could be a neat opportunity even for lunchtime crowds, ice cream trucks, you name it, especially while families are enjoying that splash pad and/or any other features of this civic space. So that is identified on here in the bubble diagram. Or could it be concession as well? Here we've got a, whether if it's a pop-up stage, or it could be a concession space or both. I think that this is another unique opportunity to do something different here so we could still host special events and community events, whether if it's with music or vending or you name it. And the example there is showing a decorated Conex box, honestly, and how you can do some really neat things with that. So that is shown there kind of in between that green space and that yellow space in the fuchsia color. And this shows everything on it, all those features that we were just talking about and how all of them fit into this space.
I will mention that representatives from Mountain Line are here, and Dono is city behind me, and Norris Design has representatives here as well. So there are, some of the folks that actually get the credit for designing this project are in the room if there are some specific questions. And I believe that we're hoping for some feedback and the idea of something of a head nod so that they can continue moving forward with design, even though we know that this particular project won't happen until after the Rio goes through.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the, the floodway designation. Currently, the Rio de Flag Channel is to the north of this diagram. So in a flood event, wouldn't the floodway be in the Rio de Flag Channel? What is this Y-shaped, blue streak across your diagram?
So, so my understanding is that, is that the, the Rio de Flag and what that line is that you're seeing go across there is underground at this particular point. And so it is moving the water underground, which is why the civic space and the natural area is built on top. However, there is still floodway coming down from the north of downtown that may not have been collected by the Rio yet, and that would flow across the surface, but hopefully at a much smaller level because most of the water has been absorbed into the underground structures. If there's somebody from the Rio project, who knows with more sophistication, I, I would welcome them. But that is my understanding, is that the, the majority of the floodwaters will have been captured and be flowing underground at this point through where that easement is, but that the, the floodway itself may still have. Perfect. Thank you.
So, so my question of the day is, is that underground water path, channel, that water conveyance, is that in place now under this area?
No, sir. Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Can you hear me okay? Is that better? My name's Claire Edelman Heath. I serve on the Beautification and Public Art Commission, but I'm here today as a private citizen and a professional consultant to Mountain Line. The, to answer your question, so this is showing the built condition of the proposed Rio de Flag, and this project can't be completed until that's finished. So that is a future catchment that's going to direct the Rio de Flag. And then the floodway, that's a federal designation by FEMA, and that can't be lifted until probably a couple of years after the Rio de Flag project's finished. So we needed to design for that condition so that it could be fully approved and, and built at the end.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm very excited for this presentation and everything that you're bringing to us. I think it's time that we do something wonderful and creative for this neighborhood. So, thank you. I just wanted to comment, and I brought this up at BPAC, I love food trucks. I love food trucks. I think they're great. But I do just want to make sure that we're bringing our small business community along in the discussion of that. I know that restaurants have a fairly hard time in this day and age making it, and I just want to make sure that we're, you know, being transparent and talking with them as we move along, if that's a route we go. And again, I do love food trucks. And I also just wanted to comment on the stage, I think that's such a great idea. I can see that really being a valuable asset to the area. So, thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you. Just to echo what Vice Mayor was just sharing, I'm really excited by all of this. I think it's a, a really great way to bring some vibrancy into this area, and I know from working on the South Side Neighborhood Plan, this was a huge part of, of what was important to them and to that community in terms of having civic space that was brought in and, and usable within that neighborhood. So seeing this full vision of, of this, I think, is really exciting. I would just ask, and, well, I'll just ask, was this taken to the, that South Side Neighborhood group and the, the team that was behind coming up with that plan?
Hop in there, Councilmember House, and answer that. I don't believe this 30% bubble diagram's been presented to the group that worked really hard on the South Side community, that neighborhood-specific plan, but I, certainly I'm happy to, to bring it forward to them because you are correct. This brings in a lot of elements that were discussed in that plan as one of those civic spaces in our South Side community overall that, that we could implement. But I do know that a lot of the feedback and public meetings were held at the Murdoch Center, so I think there was a lot of involvement at that time, but it's been a little bit quiet, right? So I'm happy to bring this back to them, just for informational purposes. I think that's an excellent idea.
Thank you very much.
I've got a question. In the floodway, I understand that we've talked about future parking to the north. On the east here, does that remain parking?
So yes, the, the existing parking lot on the outside of the dash line does remain parking, but you can also see to the north a future city parking lot. After the Rio de Flag goes through, we will lose much of the off-street parking in the south side to the bus bays. But the idea is that the civic space will be constructed and there will be a city parking lot, a surface lot initially, along that north area, sort of buffering between the civic space and the railroad tracks. And then at some point, likely, we'd build a garage there.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Garcia.
If you could just kind of articulate for me how far removed this is going to be from where the bus lanes are, are in the, in that area?
Yeah. Let me go to this overall site plan.
Thank you. Forgive me if I missed it.
We're going to go one more. There you go.
Tag teaming. As you can see here, the, the DCC building, the one that just opened, which is beautiful, if I, I must say, on the west side, and then the bus bay is taking up much of the existing parking, and then you can see the civic space off to the east with something of a gap in terms of where the buses are coming in and coming out. So it will be, it will be in proximity. There will be a significant amount of bus traffic within that space, but the civic space is separated.
Thank you for that clarification, David. Being part of BPAC when this idea was first floated many, many, many years ago, it's both interesting, curious, and delightful to see the outcomes and the improvements that have been made to this, this idea, and especially since you've gotten more input from the community, and we'll be getting so much more before this is over. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right. So to give our direction to staff, I'm going to entertain a, a motion to adopt this concept design.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the concept design for the future civic space at the Downtown Connection Center.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks so much.
Moving down to 11A, discussion.
Moving down to 11A, discussion on scope of work for Live Black Experience program procurement.
Yes, you may kick it off while we get started.
Mayor, Council, I might jump in and preface this discussion with some comments that speak to the history of this project and why we're before you today. The Live Black Experience program was actually one that came from the dais years ago. And it's been, Council asked at that time that our office, the City Manager's Office, oversee this program and get it implemented, which we have done. And over the years, we've regarded it as a very successful program. And at its inception, it was well-received. I think it remains well-received. But we had workshops on it and many presentations. And I believe in the early years, the first or second year, we had a strategic plan come forward with a scope of services and so forth that would bring this program through time. It has been funded by the city from the outset. And I don't know if additional funding's going into the program, but the city's been the, the major funding partner of this endeavor. And that amount has been approximately $50,000 a year. We've always talked about it within the budget process. And the Live Black Experience has been, in front of this council, presenting its outcomes each year and what has been accomplished. I don't believe the program is currently op, or has been operated, under a formal structure. But it has been enveloped within the neighborhood associations, mostly the, the South Side, and then more recently, in part with the Sunny Side Neighborhood Associations. That brings us to the present day. We have talked a lot about this program, its many successes. But also, in the course of that dialogue, the need to see the program elevated to perhaps a more formal structure. And that is exactly what's in front of you now. So the folks in procurement and within management services have been busy putting together a proposed scope of work to be outlined within a formal solicitation process. We think it's a good next step to take this program to that level. And look forward here to the presentation by procurement. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of background as to how this program started and why we're here today. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
Thank you.
No.
Thank you, City Manager. Hi, I'm Rick Tatter, Management Services Director. I am here along with Patrick Brown, our Purchasing Director, to present to City Council some discussion about the scope of work prior to us putting this RFP out on the street for people to put in their proposals for. But we thought was, as we spoke with the City Manager, an opportunity for Council to really help us develop that scope of work. So we're delivering what you're expecting in our community in the furtherment of the Live Black Experience. So we're hoping to get your feedback and adjustments and amendments that you may want to have or see in this process. So a little bit about the background. As Greg has mentioned, it has been here for a while, almost five years now. In August of 2020, the City Council actually had a Future Agenda Item Request discussion related to launching community dialogues around the Live Black Experience in Flagstaff, the state, and the nation. That led into an actual contract to develop a strategic plan for the Live Black Experience, which we developed, that contract for services, and delivered that one. It later came back in November, November 24th, 2020, is the council work session, where Council received an overview of the Live Black, Flagstaff's Live Black Experience Strategic Plan, as well as a presentation of Flagstaff's Live Black Experience, A Forgotten People Forging a Path Forward. It was a very good presentation put on at that time. And the following week, the Council actually adopted the strategic plan that was presented to Council that day. Since then, we've been now implementing the strategic plan. So first, we did the development. Now, we've been implementing the strategic plan over the last four years. We've continued funding through the budget process, expanding to deliver the strategic plan. And this program, the actual delivery, is in its fourth year for delivering progress on our strategic plan. So Patrick, I, and City Manager, worked on kind of a purpose, a purpose statement of what we are thinking that you are looking for with the Live Back Black Experience procurement. Prefer, I'll probably just read these. To provide services in alignment with the Flagstaff's Live Black Experience Strategic Plan, develop a series of programs, educational outreach, and focus groups aimed at creating an open dialogue with the Black community of Flagstaff and the broader community of Flagstaff, community, in order to make a positive impact within the Flagstaff Black community. The goal is to inspire conversation, collaboration, and community action policy to both address concerns of the Black community and work toward the betterment and benefit of all of Flagstaff. So that's really our first kind of discussion point with you. Do you feel that this really meets the purpose of what we should be doing for the Live Black Experience? Do you have any suggestions or edits? If not, we'll keep continuing. Not seeing any.
I think we're good.
Move forward. So today, we're going to walk through the scope of work that Patrick developed from previous contracts we had to deliver the Live Black Experience Strategic Plan. So we pulled this data together, trying to develop something that gives us a starting point with Council for you to actually give us input, adjust, amend, add, delete, to deliver the next one to five years of Live Black Experience in our community. So the scope of work we currently developed was in eight sections. I'm not going to read them here, because Patrick will be walking through several of these, and I'll be back up to walk through a couple of these also. So with that, I'll pass it on to Patrick. Thank you, Rick. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Patrick Brown, your Purchasing Director. I am going to go through these. It's quite a list, so I'll stop after each slide if we have any questions or revisions we want to talk about. So the first one is capacity building and of the board development. First subcategory is recruitment and diversity. So we're looking for them to put together a strategy to recruit a diverse board member, or diverse members' board, I guess, other way around. And that represents the community in Flagstaff. We want them to develop and submit articles in incorporation to the state of Arizona on behalf of the Live Black Experience. And then we'd like them to develop and maintain partnerships with the diverse communities. And then identify and apply for grants for the Live Black Experience. And again, these are all coming right out of the scopes of work of the past contracts. Any questions, thoughts?
Looks good.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on. Keeping in line with the capacity building, under subheader Training and Education, we want them to host annual board retreats, provide workshops, nonprofit management and leadership. Under Roles and Responsibilities, create Board Member Handbook and hold regular reviews of that handbook to ensure that the duties are being fulfilled. We'd like them to track and report program development, and then track and maintain an annual program budget. Take a minute. All right, I'm moving on. Next category is Social and Criminal Justice. Under Subcategory Advocacy and Policy Change, we want them to advocate for policy reforms and collaborate with legal aid organizations. Work with the U.S. District Attorney's Office to provide training and education opportunities. Work with the Flagstaff Police Department to continue to develop a partnership with historically Black fraternities and sororities and establish an initiative to recruit police officers and related personnels, personnel. I told myself I'm not going to read everything all the way through, but I had to do that one. Any questions on this slide? Okay, moving on.
This means that you were really thorough.
Thank you. They were really thorough. I just kind of borrowed from their scopes of work. Under Social and Criminal Justice, Continued Community Policing, that will foster relationships between law enforcement and the Black community. Host community meetings with law enforcement. And then Legal Education, hold workshops on legal rights and resources. Okay, moving on. I'm sorry, I went backwards. There we go. Under Category Representation and Preservation, Subcategory Cultural Preservation, we want them to document and celebrate Black history in Flagstaff. Under Media Representation, want them to ensure accurate and diverse representation of the Black community in local media and promote the Live Black Experience program in social media, website, and local media. Any questions? All right. Under Black Youth Perspectives and Concerns, under Subcategory Youth Empowerment Programs, we want them to develop leadership and mentorship programs for Black youth. Plan, organize, conduct a minimum of two youth events centered around topics of interest and concern in the Live Black Experience Strategic Plan. And then, under Subcategory Safe Spaces, create inclusive spaces for Black youth to express concerns. All right, moving on. Still, under Black Youth Perspectives and Concerns, Subcategory Extracurricular Activities, develop and offer sports, arts, and cultural programs. Develop and conduct Live Black Experience Community Dialogue Series to further educate the community about the Live Black Experience. And plan and host the annual Juneteenth Gala and Juneteenth Community Festival. Might be a little late for, for this week, so. Any questions? All right, moving on. Under Race, Space, and Segregation, we have Housing Equity, which will, they'll advocate for fair housing policies. Under Urban, Urban Planning, ensure urban development considers the needs of the Black community. And then, under Historical Segregation, provide education about the history and impact of segregation in Flagstaff. All right, moving on. Under Health Subcommittee Category, we have Subcategory Health Education. Provide workshops and resources on health and wellness. Organize and sponsor an annual community health fair in partnership with the community organizations in the broader Flagstaff region. Under Mouth, or Mouth, Mental Health Support, I'm trying to make one word. Under Mental Health Support, increase access and provide resources to mental health services. And then, Health Disparities, research and address health disparities. Okay, I will move on. Next category is Economic Inclusion and Impact. Employment and Entrepreneurship. Provider will provide job training and support Black-owned businesses. Financial Literacy, conduct workshops on budgeting, investing, and wealth building. Under Economic Advocacy, advocate for policies and promote economic inclusion. Okay, moving on. And then, this is where Rick takes back over. And I'll turn it over to Rick. All right, those were the details of scope of work. And then we wanted to talk about deliverables. What do you want to see as Council delivered through this program back to you through communications or other practices? Reporting-wise, we want them to provide a, the city with a budgetary allocation annually. It says fiscal year here, but we'll change that to a contract year, because this may start like October 1st and go for a, a year from there. Provider will provide detailed reporting on what expenditures have occurred at the end of the contract year. Providing a list of programs that are available in our community. Does Council want to see that on an annual basis? And providing a list of grants that LBE has received over the year. And then, would you like to see a presentation from them on an annual basis, presenting the successes of the Live Black Experience program?
Rick, I have a quick question.
Yes.
What's anticipated when you say list of programs available to the community? List of LBE programs that are available to the community?
Yes, it probably should be more defined with that, yes. All right, we got that. Thank you. Anything else you want to see as a deliverable from this contract procurement? Not seeing any. We're doing, we're doing pretty good, Patrick. Evaluation Criteria, want to give you an opportunity for input on evaluation criteria. We broke it up into three sections. The Live Black Experience requirements, demonstrating how they can deliver the program and their qualifications to run the program. We gave 40 points, or 40% to that area. How they, the program approach, how do they deliver this? What's their means of delivering the program? Schedules, workshops, and meetings. We, we put 30% for that area. And then pricing, the final one, as a 30%, the cost and the budget breakdown to delivering the forwarding of the strategic plan. Any thoughts or adjustments to those numbers as we are recommending? Here's a new slide. Sorry, I did not get this. I thought about it last night before we were going to present, so. We didn't talk about term of the contract yet. So I would really like to get your thoughts as far as the term of the contract you'd like to see as we go out for procurement. How many years do you want each contract period to be? We could always renew after a contract has been completed. But here, I gave you an example. You can have a contract that starts with an initial term of one year, two years, three years. And that's a firm. We're going to do these for these three years, for example. And then you can allow extensions on that for additional years. So if we wanted to do a five-year contract, you have a three-year term firm, and then two extension years. Giving you that opportunity to check in to make sure we're still getting to deliver what we want and want to continue the contract. So here's just a, a quick table, pretty simple tables, like one of the ways you can develop terms for this contract. And this is one area we do want to get your thoughts and recommendation on, what are you wanting to see from this program? Is it five years? Is it three years? Is it 10 years? How do you want to see us bring this forward and re-procur in the future?
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, just looking at this diagram and thinking on the fly, it seems to make most sense if we're going to use this, 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 the numeration here to have the second one down, which is an initial program for two years with a three-year potential extension. And I say that because it takes a while to get something off the ground and to actually start to see the benefits from it and to have the amount of data that you would want to report on. So I think by having, you know, one year to me is too short to get any of that stuff. Two years is probably too short as well, but it also gives us an opportunity to where if something isn't panning out for us, we could identify it then and then change course. So that leads me to the next question is, if we went with that two-year initial term and then the three-year extension, would we also be able to determine at that two-year mark if the provider was acceptable for that three-year extension? And/or if, for whatever reason, we weren't seeing the results that we wanted, could we then put another bid out?
Yes, after the firm period of time, you could say, no, we're not going to extend the contract. And we'd come back to you and say, what do you want to change in the scope of work or so forth, and we can go back out and procure.
Thank you. That's my personal recommendation. And again, it's just me thinking on the spot.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I largely agree with you outside of just the fact that this has been work that's been going on for about five years at this point already. So, I feel a little bit more secure in saying an initial one-year term with those four years of extension because I believe and think I can confidently say the data is there with either or any organization that would be bringing this forward. Assuming where proposals will be coming from and knowing the standard that has been applied with the current management under the Live Black Experience Group that's running things right now. I know that there's a lot of reporting that happens internally already and that comes forward. And part of why I didn't have a whole lot of comments during the presentation, as you both said, a lot of the guidelines for the procurement process were coming from those scopes of work that have been provided over the past four years. So, that gives me a sense of confidence that the organization could take that initial one-year firm term and then have those additional four-years extension. The other reason that I kind of align with that is going to your second question about if, for whatever reason, there was a need to go back to procurement process or reevaluate who will be serving in that capacity. I wouldn't want to give it two years if we're seeing after that first year that things are not working. So, that's just kind of where my mind is on that.
I'll definitely defer to your recommendations, Councilmember House. I was kind of just jumping in there real quick, but from whatever thing that you had said, that makes a lot more sense knowing that we have that breadth of work that has already led up to this initial. And it also gives us more flexibility on the backend if we need to make changes to things. Thank you for that clarification. I agree with you.
Counsel, is there anyone who would like to advocate for a different term?
I agree with Councilmember House.
All right, well, thank you, counsel, for that direction. We do appreciate it and will help us move this forward. Last slide, we just want to give you a timeline of our approach and how we expect to move forward. This month, we'll finalize the procurement documentations and release it early July out on the street for responses. We'll provide a deadline, probably around July 31st timeline, for a deadline to respond. Give us the August month to evaluate any responses that come through to the city procurement. And then, we expect to be back here on September 16th to council for you to award the contract based on what we've received back. And we do not have any other thing to present.
Thank you so, so much. We'll be looking for that.
All right, thank you for your input.
Sure, go ahead.
Since we are on the topic, I just wanted to briefly speak to, speak to it overall. So, prior to this, I didn't have any, I just didn't even know that this document existed for the Black Lived Experience, uh, Black, Flagstaff Lived Black Experience Strategic Plan. So, I wanted to really just point that out to the public and tell anyone who is interested in just some fun reading on a Sunday because that's what ended up for me. It only takes a couple of hours to get through this, and the amount of knowledge that I garnered from this document made me question how many people were involved. And then, I got to the appendix and saw there was over 200 people that were involved with it. And while I read the entire document, I haven't gotten to the other appendix C, which gives you all the other reading material and also, you know, stuff that you can watch and whatnot, other media outsources. There is probably a week's worth of just entertainment for those who are interested in this topic out there in the community. I highly recommend a pretty easy read for the most part and something that, if you're interested in this topic, it really lays it out for the history of Flagstaff from what we got to this point. One quick question is, who compiled all that information into that document? I saw that there was over 200 people that were participant, but how did you surmise it into eighty, eighty-one pages or whatever it was?
The initial contract was awarded to the Southside Community Association, and they ran with it. They did all the outreach and the events, and they, I think they hired a consultant to help them with that process. I'm not sure if someone has more details than that. But that was the initial contract period is to get this in place so we can start to deliver.
Looks like we got our money's worth plus. There's so much information there, and I can't wait to hear more about it.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say I can provide more information on that, actually, because I was the contractor. So, yes, so the initial group for this was developed with a number of leaders. At the time, former mayor and now Dr. Coral Evans suggested bringing people together to have this conversation about what was happening in our community in 2020. And through that conversation, we developed the Live Black Experience Community Coalition, which met at the Murdoch Center, was connected with the Southside Community Association through Dr. Coral and Ms. Kim and others, also connected with Sunnyside. We partnered with the Coconino County African Diaspora Advisory Council, the Flagstaff NAACP. Through those networks, also connected with the statewide NAACP and other organizations to bring this together. And it was a total of, for all of the topics that you saw as part of the procurement process, those were the town halls that we held, as well as a number of smaller group meetings that were attended, recorded, and then all of the information from those compiled into this ninety-two-page document, which I wrote. So, it was a very team-based work that was done to get all of this together. And then, since that time, I, I forget exactly the year that we brought on Kim Robinson as the program coordinator. But Dr. Evans has served as the Steering Committee Chair for LBE since its inception. Ms. Kim has been the, the project coordinator for the past several years and has expanded the documentation of what LBE does to include a newsletter, numerous community events that are, that have been happening over the past couple of years, and expanding those partnership opportunities to bring in organizations like Flagstaff Unified School District and others to continue that work. So, a lot of coordinated effort going into all of this.
As always, thank you for that articulation and history lesson. It was such a, such a wonderful read. I wanted to make sure that we added the appropriate voice to it. Thank you again, Councilmember.
All right, we are moving down to twelve Future Agenda Item Requests. As a reminder, the person who requested a fair will spend a couple, a couple of minutes describing why they would like council to discuss this. And we're not looking for discussion at this meeting, just two additional thumbs up. So, A, Fair, request by Councilmember Matthews to place on a future agenda a discussion regarding incentives for middle-market workforce housing.
Thank you, Mayor. As we continue to focus on our housing shortage, and we do have an incentive program for affordable housing, it's important that we look at the full housing stock. Our nurses, our teachers, firefighters, they fall into the eighty to hundred, hundred-and-twenty percent AMI, which equates some Flagstaff, though, that salary. They could look at a house purchased from three hundred thousand to four fifty, which I've had builders tell me that just to build something in Flagstaff, their cost is five hundred thousand if they pay full cost for everything. And, and, and our firefighters and our teachers and our nurses, you know, are such an important contributors to our way of life in our communities and stuff. And I get community input all the time of people saying, what can you do about middle-market workforce housing? And we don't want to, we're not in the business to subsidize everybody's housing. We can afford it, and that's a different type of government. But I think we can do something to incentivize builders to build a product that, whether it's condos, townhomes, I'm not sure how many houses would come out of that price range, but we really need to focus on that as much as we do affordable housing so that every housing level, it's a ripple effect. I talk to people all the time. It says I could move up, but there's nothing there available for me. So, they're holding on to houses than that next person could, or family could go into. I did research, sadly, this is not a surprise for everybody, but teachers at FUSD on average make fifty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars a year. So, they're in the affordable housing range. Firefighters in Flagstaff, eighty-eight to ninety-two thousand. And nurses at NAU now range around ninety-nine thousand. It takes an household income of ninety-two to ninety-six thousand dollars to qualify for a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home purchase in today's interest rate market with a twenty percent down. So, we're barely scraping, you know, the barrel to get affordable housing for those core, important workers in our community. So, I think it's, just goes in line with our housing crisis and is something that we can do to incentivize, to, to explore what we can do to incentivize, to help bring those house prices down so these community members can start looking at homeownership.
All right, do we have two additional thumbs?
Thank you, everyone.
All right, moving down to B. A request by Councilmember Spence to place on a future agenda a discussion about noise mitigation at Bushmaster Park.
Thank you, Mayor. As we're all aware, this council approved a $2.1 million contract for sports courts renovation at Bushmaster Park. And that construction work is actively underway. The result of that improvement at Bushmaster Park will be that there are eight pickleball courts located as far as possible from the nearby residences. These courts will be lighted and therefore most likely available for pickleball activity until closing, until lights-out time, which in other parks is, I think, nine o'clock in the evening. The properties to the north of the pickleball courts are three hundred and twenty-five feet, by my measurement, stepping it off, pacing the distance from the pickleball corner of the pickleball court to the residence property line on the south is three hundred and fifteen feet. And we've heard multiple presentations to this council and to previous councils about the noise effects of pickleball. And the American Pickleball Association recommends that pickleball courts be placed at least six hundred feet from residences. So, we're facing this situation that our pickleball courts are close to properties on the north and the south. And these are properties lived in by families that are low to moderate income. So, I'm asking for a discussion on a future agenda for noise mitigation. Not a noise study, but noise mitigation, which would take place after the construction is finished. The construction documents call for an eight-foot chain-link fence around each of the two pickleball courts. One court has, has two, one area has two pickleball courts, the other has six. So, the noise mitigation would be done by sound deadening and sound blocking panels. I have a sample here if anybody wants to look at it. These samples come in four feet wide by eight feet high. They can hang on the chain-link fence that is going to be constructed through this $2 million contract. So, I request this as a matter of equity for those residences. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spence. Do we have two other thumbs up? All right. Okay. We are down to open call to the public, and I do not see any. And then, informational items, too, from Mayor, council, and staff and future agenda item requests. And I'll start with Councilmember Spence.
The Indigenous Cultural Center informational session was held this last weekend adjacent to the former Public Works Maintenance Building. It was well-attended, lots of good food and vendors. And what we heard was a vision for the Indigenous Cultural Center that can come together with the city pros' cooperation. So, it's a work in progress and exciting to see that happening.
Councilmember House.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to show appreciation to council, city leadership, and staff for attending the ribbon cutting for the Habitat for Humanity Starter Home Project. Very well-attended and very impactful, so thank you, everyone that was there. I did attend yesterday a pre-meeting. There's a field trip happening right now, I believe. Deputy City Manager Shannon Anderson is on the site visit for the regional water supply project. Very informative, and I cannot believe all the partnerships that are forming and were there at the meeting yesterday, including the Bureau of Reclamation, City of Flagstaff, the Hopi Tribe, Navajo Tribe. Just, I, I'm really glad to see that everyone was in the same room and talking. And there's another week-long event, July, the week of July 14th, that I'll be attending on that. And I am off to Telluride. It's my thirty-third Bluegrass Festival. I can't even believe I'm going for thirty-three years. So, I will be out of touch for the next four or five days. Very, very happy.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tomorrow, I will be, as part of the commission, the CPWAC Commission that I, committee that I sit on with Councilmember Aslan, there will be a big water discussion tomorrow at this Public Works Yard from nine to 4:00 PM. I'll be attending that, and we'll be happy to give you guys a report when I come back next week. Also, I wanted to thank everyone who joined the Cleo Murdoch Community Park ribbon-cutting. Over 600 community members gathered to listen to music and hang out and listened to myself and Councilmember Spence give some opening remarks, which was delightful. That's all I have.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, was at the, do we call it a festival? The Connection with the Future Indigenous Cultural Center. I love learning about plants that I considered pesky weeds. Now, I'm picking them, like wild lettuce. That's my biggest love. Now I'm picking them, like wild lettuce, that's my biggest love-hate relationship, and now I can make tinctures out of it and, and help with pain mitigation with some of my friends and myself and that dandelion weed. And so it was great to find useful purposes for those annoying weeds, as we call them, in our garden. Tomorrow, I'm on the board with Mountain Line, and as Vice Mayor mentioned, sadly, it's turned to virtual. I think we're having some AC problems. We were so excited to have our first meeting there in person at the DCC, so that's what's going on in my role. That's it.
I, too, want to thank everyone who came out to the Habitat for Humanity ribbon cutting and everyone who has been involved in that project. Shout out again to Vice Mayor for bringing the developer and Habitat for Humanity together to create that. The Last Cap Full Day Retreat that we had with members of the community and some city council members and staff, but all of us in kind of different roles than we, than we normally play, I thought it was excellently done. I think staff, bravo. That was a lot of work, obviously, to pull it together, and it was just so wonderful to, to be able to hear from members of the community in a, in a more relaxed atmosphere. The Indigenous Community Cultural Center market was excellent, and the Mayor's Institute on City Design and Amy and Rose and I continue to meet and talk about how MICD might be able to assist in this project. And I am off to the U.S. Conference of Mayors Annual Meeting in lovely, cool Tampa. Yeah, I know, I know they get good prices on, on hotel space and everything because no one wants to be there at this time of year, but I'm looking forward to the meeting for sure. City Manager.
Mayor, just to follow up on your comment on the Last Cap framing our future event, I did just want to take an opportunity just to call out some staff who worked really hard on that event. It was many months in the making, so I just wanted to specifically mention Michelle McNulty, Tiffany Antal, Sarah Dar, Justina Costa, Genevieve Perthree, Nicole Antonopoulos, Jenny Niemann, and Jen Michelson. So I just wanted to specifically recognize them for that event today, or last week. It was, it went off perfectly. We had a great outside speaker, Shane Phillips from UCLA, and some facilitators. And thank you to all of you that participated. We did record it for those of you who could not be there. And also to our division directors, we had quite a few staff members and our community members who attended, so thank you.
Will the recording of it be on our website somewhere?
I do not know, but I will check.
Thank you. Greg, anything?
Once again, a thank you to those who attended the meet and greet last week for the, for the three finalists with our HR, RM division position. It was a great turnout, and we had great feedback, so much appreciated. There will be announcement going out yet today, soon as I get up to my computer, and we'll be able to put an exclamation point on that whole process. We, we have reached a decision. We have, we have somebody coming onboard and look for that message. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, I am adjourning this meeting, but we are resuming our executive session, so I will see you, council, I'll see you upstairs.